Someone has fixed that clock, I keep looking up there.
We blame it.
I'm just glad to see some of the little boy.
Yep.
Filled order the October meeting of the Mall Mel Planning Commission. Mr. Neri, do we have any announcements this week?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know that Commissioner Johnson had a conflict, he will not be with us. Late in the day, around 5 o'clock, Madam City Attorney's sister had to have an emergency surgery. She will not be with us either. Also wanted to remind everybody that this Saturday is the Mall Mel Haunted House, I think that's from 6 till 10 at the community center. And they'll also have that again on Halloween night, and it's always a good one. That concludes my announcements, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Neri. We'll move on to approval of the minutes. You all have a copy in your packets. Does anybody have any corrections, additions, deletions?
Mr. Chairman, I do have one question on page two, first sentence. As Mr. Neri stated that the project was 1,400 square feet, is that a typo? For the Benson Park addition?
First sentence of item number two, Mr. Neri, any comments on whether or not that might have been a typo?
That looks like a typo.
You recall what it might correctly be?
That, well, wasn't prepared for that, so I can't give you the exact square footage. However, we will correct it before it goes on to the city council.
Make a motion to approve minutes.
Second.
Have motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor please say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed no. Minutes are approved. I have no public comments on non-agenda items, so we will open the public hearing. And seeing no old business, we will move to new business. Items number one and two, starting with item number one, both regard a request for a waiver regarding section 70 dash 132A4. Item number one for the Fontainebleau Center, Mr. Neri?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Both of these items, one and two, have been discussed in length and in depth. So I really don't have to go into much of that with you all, you know the score. It's specifically a waiver for a driveway cut on a minor arterial, being Country Club Parkway. You have two letters of endorsement, if you will, for these waivers by Fire Marshal John Payne in your papers.
And I have a comment card for Ms. Landis, and Ms. Landis, if you would like to press podium. Would you like to speak on both items number one and two at the same time, or would you like to come back up for the next agenda?
I'll do, I'll do both.
Okay.
I can think I can do it in three minutes.
All right, how about it?
All right, thank you.
For the record, name and address please.
Pat Landis, 202 Nemours Cove, here in Mall Mel. And I respectfully ask the commission to either deny this access waiver or to defer it and allow sufficient time for there to be a little bit better planning effort put into it. It's not an accident that the Parkway looks and functions as it does, particularly for driveway access. And there's a vision for our community, and that vision is well represented in all of the land use ordinances that we have. These are some of the best ordinances I've seen in the country. And we need to use those ordinances and maintain the development pattern that we have. The ordinances should be adhered to for all properties. And, but it is standard, as you know, in land use planning, zoning, subdivision ordinances, that occasionally you have instances where a property is going to be detrimentally impacted if they have to follow the ordinance. In those cases, it's appropriate to grant a waiver or a variance. It's not appropriate to grant it for a mere convenience or for cost savings. So the question really boils down to what is so unique about these two properties that they could not be subject to the same rules as everyone else? I'm not going to preach to you about your ordinance, you know that much better than I do. But the ordinance does not permit direct access on Country Club Parkway. And there's a process, the waiver has to, the applicant has to file a waiver, and on that, they have to show you that there's something unique or unusual about the physical characteristics of a lot that would warrant this property not following the rules. Well, I'd point out several issues regarding these waivers. First of all, there was no application and file for the waivers. I wanted to look at that and see, maybe I overlooked something, maybe the applicant could point out what are the reasons for the waiver. Since there are no applications, there's no stated rationale to justify that there's no reasonable alternative based on physical characteristics. And because there's no application, I don't even know who's requesting the waiver. I don't know if it's the applicant, I don't know if it's the city. And it's, that should be a matter of public record. Bottom line is, they should follow the rules. Unless somebody can prove that there's something unique about their physical characteristics. And I've looked at the property, there's nothing unusual about the physical characteristics, and that is the only reason that you have available to you to grant a waiver. There's nothing unique about the size, the shape, the dimensions, the topography, et cetera. I don't object to the proposed use. I do object to the developers not following the same rules for design guidelines that have created the neighborhood I live in. So, what I'd like for you to do is to defer it, not to deny it, and ask the applicants to sit down with the appropriate city staff and work out a solution. It's very common to have a large parcel of land that has multiple lots, multiple owners, and they have to communicate to find out how they can have a safe traffic patterns both on the lot and off the lot. And that could be done. There simply isn't anything that's been presented, nor is there any public document available to show why there should be any rationale for a waiver. Thank you. I'm sorry, do you have any questions? Thank you.
Any questions of the Speaker? Thank you, Ms. Landis. Do we have any questions from any of the commissioners or staff?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I do. And basically, I want to talk about history. Okay. Mall Mel was one of 16 Newtown developments. And had we adhered to the original development plan, we wouldn't be talking about this. Because the original development plan for Mall Mel Newtown was everything on the east side of the Parkway was either going to be heavy commercial or industrial. There was no residential on that side at all. At all. There was a developer in 86 that proposed 1,000 residential lots over there after HUD. And the Newtown project was not financed after 1975 and was ended by Ronald Reagan in 1983. So Mall Mel was one of three cities that, according to an article in the Washington Post, was deemed... Let's see. Lost my paperwork. Quote, "One of three that were viable environmentally, socially enviable, but which could not pay their debts." So basically, Mall Mel Newtown changed. And in 1986, we started the process to become a city and wrote these ordinances. Okay. In the Dogwood Division, which was 1,000 lots that was proposed, but it never developed, there were some issues, so it didn't happen. They showed two entrances into this same area with the same golf course in the same vicinity. In 1997, there was another replat, the first one, under Country Club of Arkansas. They showed two entrances into this same area. In 2003, it changed. The one entrance on the east side became Village Way, and single-family residents were built. Now, the entrance into the Country Club of Arkansas, that Country Club Circle, shows on the print to be 20 foot wide on each side. I went out today and put a tape across it. If, unless you drive on the curb, it's 19 foot wide, each side. And with a 26-foot median. And there's going to be issues there with the fire department trying to get in. I've worked out here since 1980, I've seen both sides of that access point blocked. And the only other way is to go through a residential neighborhood that has a smaller private street that if you've got a car parked on either side, the fire truck's not going to get through there. So there's some issues that I see that are, they're scary. And as far as making them change it, you're asking two developers to change property that they don't own, that existed since, well, the final plat of this particular piece was written in 1997. And I have all these, Ms. Pat, if you want to look at this, I'll be happy to share it with you. Because since we had this time, I did a little research, because you brought up a lot of good questions. And that's basically about all I've got.
Mr. Chairman, if you please.
Yes, Mr. Neri.
Thank you, sir. The applicants are named right on the agenda as items one and two, who they are and what they requested. I have their formal request myself from October the 3rd. And as far as why this section of code exists in the first place, it's a safety issue. Plain and simple. You have an endorsement by the keeper of most of our safety issues, which would be the Mall Mel Fire Department, and in particular, the Fire Marshal, John Payne. One from early October, one from later in October, for both. Just recalling facts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Neri.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Clarification, if you will, and I guess I'm directing this to Mr. Neri. And Chief Payne's letter to us, basically, he's talking about blah 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 blah, how do you put it? It's known as the Albright Edition, as the Albright Edition, whole properties?
No, but there's another from him, from even earlier, which was actually even more streamlined. This is from the 24th. Jim, I've reviewed plans submitted electronically from Holloway Firm for Benson Park Edition and Albright Commercial. I have added a hydrant to meet the needs for fire suppression, water supply for these projects. At this time, I have no reason not to let the projects move forward, and that was as designed.
Okay, well, the reason I'm asking that question is because he's stating in this letter is that the move, if it was on Country Club of Arkansas Parkway, it's going to create a hazard. So it's his opinion that, that the hazard, it should be taken in. But I was confused, does it cover both properties, or just one, this one property?
Well, the first email covers both properties, where he reviewed both of the entrances.
On last month.
That's, that's correct. I had this conversation with John today, and one reason is somewhat confusing is because he sent these to my telephone by text.
Okay.
And hence the signature, and hence why there's no signature on this one. But we also visited about that verbally earlier in the day.
Okay.
Any further questions or comments of staff or of the applicant?
This waiver stays with the commission, by the way.
Thank you, Mr. Neri. No further questions or comments, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I wish to make a motion to grant the request for a waiver regarding section 70 dash 132 general guidelines for the Fontainebleau Center, Mark Albright, applicant.
Second.
I have motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor please say yes.
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 Those opposed, no. Motion carries, waiver is approved. Moving on to item number two, the same issue for the Benson Park Edition. Mr. Neri, anything to add to this one?
No, Mr. Chairman.
All right, do we have any commissioner questions or comments for the Benson Restoration applicant or of staff?
Well, again, Mr. Chairman, if I may. The second entrance to this area was changed from a commercial entrance to a residential entrance in 2003. Because in 1997, 1998, the development plan that I have a copy of showed the Country Club Circle entrance, and then down lower, a second entrance that goes up into the top side of the parking lot, which is where Village Way goes now.
Excuse me, John, there's another curb, a median cut before you get to the turn to that development. Is that what you're talking about?
Well, no.
Is it there, that cut?
No, it was Village Way. Village Way was the second entrance into that commercial property before it was rezoned, or not rezoned. It was changed in development plan to single-family residential.
Okay, but the, the road into Village Way, there's, the median's not there, but if you come back towards the border, there's a median cut there.
Right, but that's not where it showed on this 116, which was one of the first 668 lots that was platted. Three, four, five. I'll find it in a second. It came up beside these, there were three buildings right there. This is the entrance at the three Country Club Circle, and this is the second entrance here. And, and here's the driving range. So where these buildings are, there's houses now.
Yeah. I remember that we approved those.
This was in 1997, Mr. Holloway's dad, and the company's name was Environmental Scientists Incorporated. So, and, and also in doing this research, in the Country Club of Arkansas, not including the original Newtown, there are over 50, I quit counting at 50, plats and replats. So, the only constant in the Country Club of Arkansas is change. That's all I got, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Neri. Any further questions or comments from the commission? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, we approve the waiver regarding section 7132 general guidelines for Benson Restoration, or Benson Park Edition, pending any staff or commissioner comments.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor please say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. Waiver is approved. Move on to item number three, the preliminary plat for lot one, 10 Fitness Edition. Mr. Neri?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Once again, I must say, this was a pretty clean submittal, considering that this is the first time that we'd worked with Whitlow Engineering out of Cersei. And I must compliment Mr. Adam Whitlow and his staff on a job well done. Let's take the preliminary plat, for instance, which is item number three. We were down to actually one comment, which was satisfaction of our city engineer. And a lot of the holdup was due to one of the attachments that Mr. Whitlow tried to send Mr. Remond, did not go through until yesterday. When Mr. Remond received it, what they talked about on detention, he says this concept will be acceptable, which is all we ever asked for at this stage before they move into construction. Staff will recommend for a contingent approval of the preliminary plat. This stays with the commission.
Thank you, Mr. Neri. Do we have any commissioner questions or comments, staff? Any questions or comments to the applicant?
I do, Mr. Chairman.
Please state your name and address, business address will do, for the record, please.
My name's Adam Whitlow, Whitlow Engineering Services, 301 East Lincoln Avenue, Cersei.
Yes, sir.
Also introduce Andrew Frazier, he's actually representing the owner.
Simple question, you agree to, or you and your client agree to abide by staff comments in this procedure?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I got.
Easy enough.
Any further questions or comments of the applicant? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
Chairman, I would propose approval of the preliminary plat, lot one, 10 Fitness Edition, together with all commissioner and staff comments.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no. All right. Preliminary plat is approved. Moving on to item number four, the proposed site plan for the same development, same applicant. Mr. Neri?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The site plan, the landscape plan, the commercial building, they all stay with the commission this evening. Same comment on the site plan as there was from the preliminary plat. There was one outstanding, which was satisfaction of city engineer. Staff will recommend for a contingent approval.
Have any questions or comments of staff? Anything to the applicant? I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I wish to make a motion that we accept the proposed site plan for lot one dash 10 Fitness Edition, subject to all staff and commissioner comments.
Second.
I have motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor please say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. The site plan is approved. Moving on to item number five, the landscape plan for the 10 Fitness Edition. Mr. Neri, anything to add?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, approve is submitted.
Short and sweet.
You'll end up very often.
Any questions or comments of staff or the applicant? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the proposed landscape plan for 10 Fitness.
I'll second that.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Moving on to item number six, proposed commercial building design for the 10 Fitness Edition. Mr. Neri?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, approve is submitted.
Do I have any questions or comments of staff or the applicant? I will entertain a motion. Make a motion to approve proposed commercial building design for 10 Fitness Edition.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no.
Mr. Chairman, if you please, I'd like to say this for the record. And as soon as I say this, I'll probably jinx Mr. Whitlow's firm from here on out, if he comes back to Mall Mel. But this is something that doesn't happen very often, in fact, never. Especially when you haven't worked with the Mall Mel format before, and our deadlines that we have, which can really be tricky. To have a landscape plan and a commercial building design without one comment, and, maybe even more than that, not one comment from our fire marshal, I've never seen that before. And I must also compliment the 10 Fitness executives and members of their corporation, and their willingness to work with the city of Mall Mel, and how much they want it to be here. Doesn't mean that what you saw on the plans was there in the very beginning, but we'd like your building to look like this, okay? We would like for you to put this sidewalk in down this side, and we want it to look like this, okay? They were very easy to work with, and that doesn't happen very often either. Very good job.
Very good job, gentlemen. All right, we'll move on to item number seven, the request for a conditional use permit to locate a church in a C1 zoning designation for the Village Center Commercial, Calvary Chapel. Mr. Neri, any comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a request, just as you mentioned, from Calvary Chapel Church of Little Rock, to locate in what used to be the former US Pizza location in front of City Hall. The pastor is Mr. Brad Wood. You can see the staff analysis, that is a very quiet section of Mall Mel for when they propose services on Sunday morning and early Sunday evening, and a men's prayer service at 8 o'clock in the morning on the first Saturday of every month. I saw no problem with ingress and egress, they have two ways in, two ways out. The fire marshal's seen it, our code enforcement and permitting director, they've been through it as well. There's a few things they need to accomplish for them. But for our charge, we also put a sign out so we can stimulate some public comment. By the time I had done that, and it went out for you to pick your agendas up, there were nine public comments, nine in favor, none against. This does move on to the city council. Staff is going to recommend for a due pass recommendation to the Mall Mel City Council.
Thank you, Mr. Neri. Do we have any questions or comments, staff? And I see we do have Pastor Brad Wood in the, in the gallery here. If anybody has any questions, Mr. Wood? Does anyone have a motion?
Chairman, I'd make a motion to grant a conditional permit use to the church.
It's a due pass, Chairman.
I was going to get to that. You beat me to it, Neri. Anyway, due pass to the city council for the conditional use of the church to be located in the C1 Village Center Commercial zoning. Subject two, any commissioner staff comments?
Second.
I have motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries.
Pastor Wood, your request will be in front of the Mall Mel City Council on Monday, November the 4th, at 6:00 PM in the council chambers here.
Moving on to item number eight, the request for the amendment to section 54 dash 102 of the Master Street Plan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This was a request from our mayor to remove the proposed roundabout at Council Massey and Crystal Hill, which we've done. Also, I thought, well, while we're at it, we might as well get a couple of things on there that we also need. So we've included the roads from Phase 18 of Country Club of Arkansas, where the final plat has been executed, as well as Carnahan Village, where the final plat has been executed. This plan will move on to the Mall Mel City Council. Therefore, staff will recommend for a due pass, or do adopt, to the Mall Mel City Council.
Thank you, Mr. Neri. Do we have any questions or comments to the staff?
Mr. Chairman, I do. Mr. Neri?
Yes, sir.
The, the little area that's now a green hash mark at White Oak Crossing exit, instead of the hash mark, would you make that a solid green line to the interstate?
Yes, sir.
As of November 6th?
By the time it clears, council.
I can send it to the council like that.
Okay. And I guess we need to leave short Marseille there, because we really don't know.
No comment.
Judge Hagg.
Have any further questions or comments, staff or, or the applicant, as Mr. Mayor is in attendance? No further question or comments, does anyone have a motion?
Make a motion, we pass this on to the city council with a due pass recommendation.
Second.
I have motion in two seconds, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no. All right, motion carries. All right, I will now close the public hearing, and we'll move on to council liaison reports for the meeting for October the 7th. Commissioner Smith?
Yes, it was a very long meeting. First reading ordinance 987 for truck routes, basically, aiming trucks off White Oak Crossing and down to Council Massey rather than Country Club Parkway. Several resolutions for the general budget.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Smith. October 20- October 21st, Mr. Fisher?
Yes, that was probably one of the shorter meetings I've attended for the city in a long time, just me personally. The only two items that really had anything to do with planning commission were deferred until the next council meeting, and that was on the Benson Park Edition and Albright Commercial Development until after our meeting on what we just took up. Other than that, there was some general business that was taken care of, and that was it.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Council liaisons for November, November 4th is mine, and November 18th is Commissioner Ramsey. Before we adjourn, I'd like to remind everybody to look at the notation on the bottom of your agenda. Our meeting dates will change a little bit from November and December due to the holidays. And do I have any other motions?
Motion to adjourn, second.
Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor, yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no. We are adjourned.